Okay, six o'clock is the time to call the orders of Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission Meeting tonight. At this time, I'll ask Robert if he would do the invitation and Jennifer Graham to do the place. If you would, please stand.
You would bow with me in this prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us our health. Father, we thank you for keeping us alive and well, and Father, we just praise you for the blessing of this opportunity to meet here tonight. We ask that things that are being discussed here tonight in this meeting, that it be beneficial to all the present, the city of Mount Pleasant, all the residents here, Father, and we just pray that you give us wisdom to make these decisions that are before us tonight, and we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
My allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you that the ministry reflects that we have enough for a forum, everyone in attendance. Item number three on the agenda tonight is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I have a motion.
A second.
A second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is approval of minutes prior to meeting June 8, 2021.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from June 8, 2021.
I have a motion.
I'm seconding it.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is flat approvals. At this time, I'll turn it over to Robert, let him do his homework on this.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the board members being here and all members present in the audience. Under PC 071321, FP1, what's before this board tonight is owner Alex Seaman, who's represented by Rhodes Engineering. Mr. Shapiro, I believe, was in the audience. I don't know if anybody else is present. I do want to express to the board that the owners were planning on attending, but as you might be aware of, they are actually out of California, and some things hindered them from getting back to be here tonight. So, the owner is not present, but a representative here from Rhodes Engineering, and they wanted to commit to convey to y'all that they apologize for not being able to make this meeting. Owner Alex Seaman, represented by Rhodes Engineering, has submitted a final flat for the development of 49 residential lots in the Sugar Creek subdivision located on 17.19 acres, further identified on tax map 133, partial 9, being duly recorded at Merit County Register of Deeds. This board is very familiar. Most of us on here on board are very familiar with this particular flat. We've had several reviews, speaking specifically of the construction documents. We've done thorough reviews of the construction documents up to this point, and our final review of those construction documents for presentation of the final plan for this board tonight was a good review. Comments were addressed, comments were taken care of, there's been changes significant enough to assure us that the subdivision, the construction of that subdivision, we're not presenting any, excuse me, any future, will not create any future issues for that existing Section 1 and Section 2 of Sugar Creek as far as flooding. That Section 1 and Section 2 has been the victim of flooding on several occasions, and one of our main concerns during the review of the construction documents was that we wasn't adding any additional water flow that could be conveyed to an appropriate location without causation of more flooding. So, that is before the board tonight. The final flat has been reviewed as well through myself and Loos, Associate Will Hager is a representative of our contract planner. He will be able to answer any particular questions that the board may have, as well as I. I will do my best, and Mr. Shapiro is here as well. Along with your package, you received restrictions and covenants that have been drafted by the current owners. It is a short version, but it speaks specifically, specifically the lot 43. That was one of the questions, that was one of the areas of concern during our review of construction documents. Lot 43 is a oversized lot, but under lot 43, a portion of that can only be used for building. The other portion is the detention area for that part of the subdivision. It's reflected in the covenants. It's also reflected on the final flat, the requirements for that particular lot in note, if I'm not mistaken, 15. Without looking at the flat myself, on the flat, I think they can note 15 where that lot 43, it's reflected also in the draft document here for you for the restrictions. We've taken great care of looking at that. We know in the future, how are we going to enforce that? You know, I think, you know, we could keep a well enough eye on it. I think anybody that buys that particular lot will get the notations that you have before you, so they understand that that is a drainage area that cannot be touched, but they are responsible for the maintenance of it. We can keep an eye on that in the future for enforcement measures, if anything has to come up. Anything over 200 square foot has to get a building permit before me. A fence has to get a building, has to get its own permit before me, so that's one of the ways that at least my office can assist in the enforcement. But the deed restrictions and the flat and the owner record, who purchases that lot, will be well aware.
Title will make them well aware when they purchase it.
It's going to be a little bit different from the ones that already have steps.
Most certainly, yes. Yeah, because it is a much larger lot.
I read through this, and I'm like, you know, it's.
It's a much larger lot, and then you've got a berm there that's incorporated on the detention area of the lot. So, I mean, it's a drainage area. It's a place for that, some of that water to accumulate, which goes back to the construction documents and what we reviewed, and we tried to alleviate any concerns to Section 1, Section 2, and Section 3, but specifically to Section 1 and Section 2 because of the watershed that could occur. Also, if you'll notice, there is a easement, I don't know if it's shown on.
Is that on the.
Section 2. So, behind lots, it's not shown on, on the flat that you're looking at, it's not shown on 3, but it is identified on the next flat you'll be viewing. At one point in 96, lot 96 and 97, which is in the corner there.
96 is the corner.
Yes. At one point, under the previous approval of Sections 1 and Section 2, that was identified as a retention area full of water, so there was a good section of that property that was taken up. Well, after reviewing the construction documents, we've found through calculations and stuff that the best approach to taking care of that water drainage that comes from Mockingbird area would be to convey it in a constructed ditch line that exists, but it is not in, it's not in good shape. It's neither deep enough nor wide enough at this point. So, when this subdivision actually gets off the ground, part of the construction documents identify that to be deepened and widened and identified as a conveyance for the excess water flow, which by all calculations appears to convey the water downstream from those houses that will take it past that corner, which should alleviate concerns for future flooding in that area as best as we can. You can't get all of the water, but you can certainly take a large majority of it to a point of discharge. That's been looked at several times over as far as the construction. That's kind of the things that I wanted to point out specifically to y'all, and we'll talk more about the drainage easement when we get to the next flat. But as I stated in my opening, Mr. Hager's here, he can give you details if you wish to him speak, and then Mr. Shapiro is here as well, who's done the majority of the end work on this final flat and the construction documents, so he's very familiar with the project.
I would think it's board's concern right now, the main thing is from your office and from Will and getting some comments from him and stuff.
Yeah. So, yeah, if y'all.
I'm fine with that. Thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see y'all. As Robert mentioned, we, you know, we've reviewed this for a number of months now, and working with our engineers, they're comfortable with the revised construction drawings that Mr. Shapiro and his team have provided. The plats reflect what's called for in those construction drawings. So, on the, it's actually item two for lots, 93 through 95, you'll see a wider, look utility and drainage easement. That went from 10 feet to 20 to accommodate that improved ditch line, which hopefully resolves a lot of the existing issues and plans for future need for drainage in that area. And then on the opposite side, on your first item, lot 43 has that oversized shape to accommodate some detention. It's not a retention pond, it's not going to hold water forever, but during a storm event, it'll slow it down and let it release down that side of the watershed. So, there's kind of two sides where water drains in the neighborhood. But if you have other questions beyond that, I'm happy to try to answer those.
I mean, I think the main concern is flooding. So, you're telling us you're very comfortable with everything that's laid out here that is going to make flooding better, not worse or the same.
We're going to get the water away some.
Right. Right. It won't increase the problems that are there, and it's hoping to resolve quite a few as well.
Okay, that's my question. You said it won't increase, but the houses are already complaining about flooding. How is it going to affect?
Well, hopefully, with this second item, with that wider improved ditch, that will be the responsibility of the developer as they bring on these future sections, they'll have to cut in that ditch to accommodate or increase capacity for stormwater. So, that should be a significant improvement over what's happening now because the ditch line sometimes isn't there. So, that's led to a lot of problems in the past.
Very good. You have one question?
I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's the number one concern from a lot of people, especially the residents in the area right now, is that they go to building and stuff and, you know, putting more runoff and stuff into the area and stuff there.
I think all the questions about utility, except for the back end.
Yeah, I read through all that, and all the permits and stuff are in line and stuff, but I love, we're going to let some people speak on this before we do anything. First of all, we've got Paul Montgomery. If you would, come forward and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Paul Montgomery. I live at 399 Brookside Drive, right in the curve there.
Yes, sir.
And I'm flooded out now, and I have been for 17 years. And the previous owner of that field out back, who was Floyd, and he sold it to these people here. Anyway, he said that's only going to be a hay field out there. He said, "Don't worry about it." And I said, "Okay," when I bought the house, I bought the lot, and on my deed, it does not state no retention on each side of my house, you know. It does not state that. I bought 135-foot frontage, 100 and some deep, I think it's 70 across the back. So, now, this gentleman Doug here, he says they want to run a pipe, want to put the retention pond out the back of my house there. He said, "That's the lowest point." Well, I can stand up there without a transit or anything and look down through there. That's not the lowest point of that field. Lowest point is about four houses down, you know, and that's where all the water is coming from down to my place. Now, Ms. Chafers, Ellis Chafers, she lives right beside of me there. When we get a big rain, it goes under her floor, runs across my front lawn driveway. It's already washed the gravel up on my driveway, and it's busted. Now, my driveway's got to be replaced, and the fire hydrants out there, and when that water runs across, it's washing out. Now, I've got that big culvert in front of my house already and the big ditch line. I mean, I'm sitting up here on a point, you know. Now, he was talking about putting a pipeline over on the other side of the house. My neighbor here, he don't have 10-foot easement from his property to mine. That's where they want to go down through there with a pipe. Now, under my understanding, if you have these easements, that's for electricity, water, and gas, and if they do something to your property there, it's got to be put back, if they run a pipe down through there, it's got to, your property's got to be put back the way it was.
Correct.
You know, there's no ditches or nothing to be put down through there.
That's correct.
But according to him, he said he wanted to put a ditch line down through there, too.
Between your houses?
Yeah. There ain't no retention out there. I mean, he don't have that much room from his house to my property line, you know. And now, Ms. Chafers and I have been living with that for, you know, years. And if you come out there and look at it, it's almost washed my mailbox out, and I have to keep putting cement in there. It's washed all the gravel up under my driveway, and it's busted it up, you know. So, who's responsible for that? The guy that owns the field or is the city? Now, when Mr. Good was mayor up here, I come and got him, took him out there. He said, "Well, city don't have anything to do with this. This comes from the field back there," you know. So, then I got ahold of Mike Floyd, and he said, "Well, we can dig you a big ditch line out there," but that never did happen, you know. So, it ended up he sold the property to somebody else. Now, they want to put us up on a perch there, you know. I mean, water running in the back of my house, how much is that going to lower my property You know what the, what do you call it, the holding pond or the cesspool or whatever?
The retention pond.
Whatever, mosquito bin, what you can call it. And somebody come to buy my house, they go and say, "Well, what's this big pool up back here?" You know, where's all this water running down this side? It got to run in front, because I've got a big culvert out there in the front, and I've got water running down this side, that side, and down the front. Now, you want to put water out the back of it. So, my point is go to the lowest point in the field, so the water can drain down to that lowest point, then put into a pipe and run it wherever you want to, you know. Granted, over on that left side, it would be more convenient for them, probably not expensive, you know, but I bought that house myself, you know, for retirement things, you know. If I want to sell it, I'm not going to get that much money out of it.
I understand, Mr. Montgomery.
So, that's what I'm saying, you know. If I could get, well, I talked to one of the guys out here, and he said he'd come out and take a look, you know, see what the.
I feel we're going to have a totally different situation over now, prior to what they had over there with the past developer on this issue here, because before I, you know, several years ago, they just went in there, made a lot of promises, didn't do things that they were supposed to. I mean, they went back and pulled plans and things that's supposed to have been put in the plans, wouldn't put in the plans and stuff. That's the reason this is, to me, while I've been sitting on this board, this has been an issue a year and a half, two years or better with this subdivision over here and stuff. We're trying to make sure that you got all our i's dotted and t's crossed, if that's what you want to say, and I can understand with you. Maybe that's something that the developer could work with you and your neighbor here with, owning stuff. I'm going to let Mr. Doug speak here in a minute on behalf of the engineering group, but I know where your house and stuff is, and I'm aware of your problem right there. And when it rains, you've got some.
You betcha. Bring your boat and paddle out there.
You've got them. You sure do.
Yes, sir.
You sure do. I'm well aware of that right there and stuff, and I can understand how you feel about wanting a stick of retention pond in behind my house and a ditch in between my house and my neighbor. I can understand that, too. But we'll see as we get into this and.
Okay.
Go for mayor. Appreciate your concerns. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sir.
I got one more. I'm going to let you speak before I let you speak, please. I got Jeff Saum.
My name is Jeff Saum. I live at 403 Brookside, Mr. Montgomery's neighbor. We just recently bought the house in September, so I, to be honest with you, I haven't seen the deed or anything, but like Mr. Montgomery pointed out, you know, I don't have 10-foot from my house to the property line for this easement to go down. My air conditioner is right there in the way, so it's not, there's not enough room there. So, I guess my concern is a couple things. One, it doesn't seem like we're touching the lowest point to put this retention pond in. Two, it feels like this issue wasn't dealt with at the very beginning. So, I don't know if there wasn't surveys done to say that this water was going to be running downhill at this level, that this land was leveled, whatever needed to be done. But, I mean, houses that have been there for years are now being, you know, torn apart or, you know, their yards are being torn apart to make all these changes, and it feels like there's just, I know that there's been a lot of work put into it, but it doesn't seem like there's been a lot of common sense put into it and the point that if you're going to put a retention pond, why are you not putting it at the lowest level?
No, I.
I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me, because you're still going to end up with the same problems if you're not touching the lowest level, and you're touching it here, the water's still going to run here somewhere. Are we running pipes this way? I don't think we are. We're just running it from the retention pond over and back up, where the pond already comes here, goes across the road, and comes back this way. Now, you want to come in between here, cut it across, and meet that same retention over here. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I know that from the last meeting that I was in, that we were talking about properties, and you guys were talking about wanting to build Mount Pleasant and make Mount Pleasant nice and watch Mount Pleasant grow, and I just feel with a subdivision like Sugar Creek, it's a nice subdivision.
Yeah.
And here we are going to put something like a retention pond in it that's going to lower everybody's value that's around that retention pond. And you look at some of these other subdivisions, and if they try to solve problems with flooding or anything, it's not a retention pond that's dealing with mosquitoes.
Aren't we talking about a detention pond, right?
We're a detention.
Very different.
Well, it's going to be a mosquito trap. So, I mean, to me, I mean, you look at other subdivisions, the way that they deal with it, it's more like a pond, right? It's got a little bit of water in it. It's got something that comes up in the middle that's flowing water, keeps that water moving, right? That makes it a little bit nicer, because if you just put a hole in the ground, that's going to take the water, some of that water's not going to run out. It's going to sit for days, right? And that's going to bring mosquitoes day after day. I mean, if we're going to make it look nice, and we're trying to make Mount Pleasant look nice and grow, why are we just putting a big hole right in the middle of a nice subdivision? Why can we not put something nicer there that's going to liven up the development that they're wanting to put in instead of bringing it down? I just, you know, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. If it's got to be done, make it nice. Don't make it just a big hole in the ground.
I understand.
With water to be sitting there with mosquitoes to just be all over the place. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's, the way that it was done is acceptable. I don't think, and you know, like I said, my easement, I don't have 10-foot, so, I mean, I think there needs to be a little bit more work put into it to where, you know, more work needs to be done on that field before you start tearing everybody's yards up and just saying, "Hey, that's the easy fix for now." You know, I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to do it right, do it right the first time and not, you know, because we're going to run into this problem 10 years from now with other people.
That's reading the problems they got now, they didn't do it right the first time.
Exactly. And I feel like if we're just doing it now, and we're not putting it at the lowest level, five years from now, you're still going to have houses that are flooding, and we're going to be right back in there talking about, "Well, now we need to put a retention pond down there at the lower level to run more easements and get this problem fixed again." So, I mean, I think there just needs to be a little bit more done before we actually say, "Okay, this, this needs to be approved, we're ready to approve this." So.
We thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Doug?
Yes, sir. Doug Chaprow, Rhodes Engineering. First of all, I've got to, trying to, trying to get set on how many things were said, and now I'm trying to get prepared myself on how to go about this. First of all, there is easements on all lot lines in each subdivision. Section 1, I've got a copy of Section 1, but it doesn't have the entire notes and everything on this. I enlarged that to show that particular area that they're talking about, the detention. So, yeah, so number one, all lots have a 10-foot drainage easement on Section 1, on each lot line, which totals 20. So, about the low point in the subdivision, the, all topographic information is done by certified, excuse me, certified land surveyor. That is the low point of the subdivision, okay? All the drainage is designed to come to a lowest point and to a detention area. So, the release, the design is on a 25-year storm. Robert, I don't know if that City of Mount Pleasant really has a designated design storm. I don't think they do, but our design's based on a 25-year storm, which is, I'm just, don't hold me to this, but it's around six to seven inches of rain per hour. So, all the detention and design is based on a 25-year detention reviewed by Loos and Associates. So, we, we're the designers. They approve or approve with comments and so on, any, anything over the past few months, applying to design and comments or questions applying to drainage. So, so in reference to the topographic, that is the low point. Now, section, this is Section 1 that the two gentlemen were referring to, where the drainage pipe that outlets from the detention is underground, and it's designed to handle up to a 50-year storm if for some reason the detention does not, it doesn't handle it. It's, that swell ditch is designed to carry an overflow at an emergency situation. So, that's, that's why the swell ditch is in there. It's a foot deep roughly and three foot wide, and aesthetically, I mean, it's the best we can do. The drainage that comes out of the detention is, it goes through a 42-inch pipe that is underground, and aesthetically, it's within an easement that, that handles the drainage from the detention. So, that, that's, that's the design. It's, it meets, it's approved by the reviewers, Loos and Associates, for the, who are contracted through the City of Mount Pleasant. So, the drainage network is, I mean, aesthetically, is the best you can do with what we're given. So, and we've met all the requirements on drainage, plans have been reviewed, we've met, as the designers, the water and sewer approved by the state, everything's been Let me add, so back to the drainage that comes to the, not sure side of Jeff, but the left side, Ms. Chafers maybe, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what this does, so say there's approximately 10 acres that drain to the left side of the house, which is what he was referring to, that is overland flow coming off an existing property that's, is obviously, this is the developed Section 3. So, when that water run on a 10 or, or let's just say a six or seven inch rain, it's naturally coming over to between their lots. it's naturally coming over to between their lots. That's just what's happening there now. Yeah, I can understand. There's probably a, obviously a drainage situation problem there. But there's 10 acres of water that drains between those homes. And that's not, I mean, we didn't create that situation. We're just the engineers, designers. But what this section three will do with the detention, it will, it will hold that drainage that is, that runs off from that 10 acres post-development, pre-development and post-development. You've got probably 20 of the, there's 49 or so houses. Approximately, let's just say half of that, 25 is, is, it runs through, the drainage runoff runs through a pipe network that ends up in the detention area. So this section three is going to reduce, I mean, just almost take care of all that drainage that is coming to you on the left side of your house. So that's how, that's part of it. That's part of the detention. That's why, you know, in this section three, we've got detention. It's, it's the latest in technology, you know, it brings all the drainage to that detention. That's going to help, that's going to cut out that situation of drainage, which is just naturally draining off, has nowhere to go but that swell that was done years ago, 25 years ago, and goes between their house. Now, after it gets between their house and tops the driveway on a 25-year, we didn't create the situation. This is helping that situation. It, it is probably removing the, the drainage situation. It's, you know, it's eliminating the drainage that's topping the driveway. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you say how long the detention area would stay wet, like with the six-inch rain? Like, would it be days or?
Well, no, it's designed to drain at a, at a rate, but it's not gonna, it's designed with a like half 1% slope. When it gets down two, three inches deep, it's going to seep into the ground. It's not going to be a.
It's gonna be a pond.
Yeah. And these, when these detention ponds are done, they have to be, elevations have to be shot. You can't go out there, you know, you can't just, it's got to be done by plan. They're done by professionals, okay? Land surveyors, contractors, they have to meet, they have to build that detention to drain and have elevation shot where it's on a minimum half 1% slope. And it's what, when it gets down to one or two inches deep, it's seeping into the, it's seeping into the ground.
And the goal is for it to be dry all the time unless there's rain.
Well, yeah, and then after that, we can't control that. So.
That's a big difference between detention and retention. Yeah.
Could I say something? I don't mean to interrupt here. Where he's talking about, water comes up out of the ground, down two houses down. He comes up out of the ground out here in this big ditch, retention pond. And it'll run for two weeks after a heavy rain, it keeps running. And then it gets down real low, then it starts running black. We've had people come out and test the water. I don't know who come out and test it. It looked like sewage, smells like sewage.
It's what it is.
And it's nothing. Not behind Ms. Schaefer's house.
Okay.
Oh, Ms. Schaefer's house. They, they, two big holes are that big. It'll run for two weeks. It just comes right straight up there. There's nothing to do with that field up there.
Okay. All right. That's the only thing I can guess that is being, is being a wet weather spring and that's.
And I'm saying, it's still washing my driveway out, my, all that stuff, you know? And everybody else is, I mean, I've got a problem out there. Like I said, I've got to have a new driveway put in.
Okay, so.
Will that retention pond take care of that?
I'm sorry, what?
Will that, will that, the retention pond take care of that problem? Will that pick it up? Because you're saying that one to two inches, she's seeping the ground and it can't seep in the ground.
Well, he's talking, first of all, he's talking about a hole or a couple of holes that are out there behind the lots, Ms. Schaefer's. But the drainage, who knows? I can't answer that question because one is, I don't know where the water's coming from. You got underwater, underground aquifers that carry water springs and so on. So, but I do know this, that, that that detention is taking care of at least 10 acres of development, 25 plus houses in an underground drainage network. And then that could be a separate wet weather spring that, that we don't know. So I really can't answer that question. But I know that the detention and for this section three is going to take care of majority of all, if not all of the drainage that comes off pre and post-development. So.
You said another thing there. I don't mean to interrupt now.
Okay.
But you said there's going to be a ditch line over on our side of the house where his air conditioning is at? My air conditioner sits on that side too. And you said there's going to be a ditch plus a pipe goes down through there?
Where the pipe, pipe is between the homes. But the swell ditch that's on the design is just there to take care of an emergency situation, not a 25-year storm or a 10-year storm. It's for an emergency situation where if something possibly got stopped up and it's, that's strictly what it's for. Otherwise, you won't see water holding into that ditch because it's got a slope on it and it's, it's got a slope, I can't remember, slope maybe two or three percent that'll carry that drainage from the back of your homes to the front. But there's a 10-foot easement on each side of that lot line. And if, if you've got a, I, I, I've seen it several times. I know there's more than 20 feet total in between the homes. Okay, if there's more, if, if you've got your home less than 10 foot from that ditch, then it's on, it's encroaching on an easement. I didn't need them.
Well, if you do that, on your easement, you're supposed to put that in there, but you're supposed to level my ground back there. You don't give me a ditch out there. Make it unlevel. Who been paying taxes? I've been paying taxes on that 17 years. Who says that?
You put it down on property. Why would somebody want to put a fence in their backyard? You got a big ditch running down. You can't put it, you can't put it in there.
They put it in easement anyway without permission. Well, you can't put it in the easement. Anyway, I, like I said, it's, it's just, it's an overflow for emergency. It's not going to have any water in it, just stagnant water. So.
You better check your records. That's got, you can put your utilities back there on that easement, to that easement. But you've got to put the ground back like it was. You can't walk out there with a ditch line.
The entire design is, is, is made and then Loos and Associates proved it. And like I said, it's for emergency situation where the, where the detention would stop up and then overflow conditions.
Well, then come out and buy my, buy my property.
But I, I.
When I bought it, there's nothing on my deed said that they.
Well, no, I got to say, your deed may not, probably doesn't. I don't, I don't think, unless there's a specific, like in this case, detention area, lot of, of. The lot, lot four three. It's going to be on that deed. But the other, the other lots are going to be in a deed. And the, the fact is, when a title company does a title search on your property, every, most of your money in here is closed out on a home at one time or another. Very rarely do they tell you and show you a plat of your subdivision. And it's just a fact. I, I've closed out on a couple of homes myself. And I've been in the survey and engineer business for a long time too. But it's just a fact. They, they have you sign the papers and, and give you your deed, but very few people get a copy of their plat and close them. And I, I don't know if you guys have been through it or not, but.
I'm a real estate agent, so.
Okay.
And, and you're right. I mean, unless there's a specific reason.
Right, right. And.
But it might be in their, their, you know, covenants and restrictions stuff like it is in these. But you don't always get that either because if it's already a built-out subdivision, it's not that. You wouldn't think it was that anyway. Yeah, you're right.
It's just a fact. And. I'm sorry, what?
So whether it says on there or anybody else's deed, there's a 10-foot easement.
No, not necessarily because the, the plat. Okay, on yours, it's, on yours, it's, oh, you're, you're, you're below.
Four oh eight.
Okay, four oh eight, which is on this plat and that's, that's lot seven. That's lot seven. It is, it's right here.
It says I have an easement over there.
Oh, absolutely. Well, actually, this is an enlarged drawing, which doesn't have the notes. But in the notes, all lots have a 10-foot utility and drainage. Pardon? In the notes, the general notes on the final plat recorded.
We don't have a copy of that.
You probably, obviously don't, but.
You don't need it, right?
Well, I don't have the full copy. I just enlarged this plat, which is a.
It doesn't have the notes.
It doesn't have the notes on it. I just enlarged.
Can I ask a question for you? Maybe you can clarify. So this, these ditches and these easements that you're talking about are on a recorded plat that's in the register of the deeds office, right?
The public utility and drainage easements are on this, on a recorded plat. And it is.
They are somewhere.
Yes.
At the courthouse.
They're in the general notes on the plat, okay? On the drainage, public utility and drainage easement, 10-foot each side of the property line, okay? Unless shown otherwise, and in this case, um, lot, your lot seven has a sewer, has a sewer easement on it.
In the back.
In the back and the sides. And yes, okay. Lot six is to the southwest of the, Patel's right across the street or across neighbors. Okay, their easement's 15-foot and it has a, a regular shaped easement because there's a drainage pipe that comes under the road. So that's the case where unless shown, shown otherwise comes in. So.
Because there's.
Yes. Yes, not, yes. So. Yeah, it did because it's not within the 10-foot. So anyway, all lots pertaining to this subdivision, section three, section two, which is revised with the drainage easement, they have the easement. And the purpose back to the section two, it had a 10-foot easement. Mr. Archibald explained about the ditch being outside the easement. Or not that, but the fact that they needed 20-foot to improve the ditch, which we improved the design, improves the capacity of the existing ditch from 100 CFS. It, the proposed ditch is going to hold twice the capacity of water than the existing ditch. So that's what's going on with section two that Robert referred to a while ago. The four lots, which is the section two plat, that he's referring to.
The right-of-way easement.
Yes, it, it, it is basically revising the existing 10-foot rear easement to 20-foot, so the size of the ditch that's proposed will fit in the 20-foot, which in, this, this, that proposed ditch coming all the way through the lots increases, doubles the capacity. Let me just put it that way. It doubles the capacity, which is, that's, that takes care of that situation. That's why the four owners of those lots find they're welcoming the ditch being improved to double the capacity. It's just, that's, that's what section two plat is for, just to let that be known. But just to close out on, and I can answer, we're trying to answer any questions that you may have. But like I said, we're, we were contracted to design the subdivision. We've met all the requirements. Everything we've done's been approved. The stat, the water and sewer's been approved by the state. And we, we fulfilled our obligations. So I'll be glad to answer anything else I can, but that's where, where I am.
Well, I appreciate that.
My, my, my question is, I mean, if it's, if it's going to be approved, it's going to be approved. I mean, aesthetically, it's, it's going to be a hole in the ground. I mean, it's going to not look very nice. It's going to widen out the property values in that subdivision around there. I mean, it's, somebody's going to come in there and sit big hole in the ground.
Are you, are you talking about the hole, the detentions in?
Yeah. I mean, and it's going to, it's going to be a mosquito problem.
Well, the way we designed the detention to detain water on a 25-year storm, that's approximately a six or seven inch rain in an hour, which is a lot of water. So we, we designed it as, as good as it can be designed. And we, like I said, we got, there's professional land surveyors and contractors that have to hold to the grades we, we have on the plants. If it, if it doesn't, if it's not done right, it, it won't be approved. I mean, it's got to be approved and done by plan. And, and it's, it's, it's a pretty exact science, Jeff. I just got to tell you. It's, and drainage is improved years ago, 25 years ago.
All right.
They didn't do it.
We appreciate it. We could go back and forth all night long. I, right now, I have a question for legal on this. As the board, with them meeting all their requirements through the zoning and through our engineering department and stuff, we're held.
Your, your job is to make sure the site plan review, the site plan complies with the zoning ordinance. And I feel like with Loos and Mr. Archibald's review, they are telling you that it does meet those requirements. And these engineers have addressed the flooding issue, which has been the biggest problem. So your job is to say whether or not they meet the zoning or the, the site plan guidelines. And that's where you asked Mr. Archibald and Loos to speak on at the beginning. So I think that's what you are, you're approving or disproving based on that would be. Not sure if that answers your question.
Yes, it, it does. I'm just, you know, and as a board, you know, we've helped them to this over the last two years of getting things right and stuff. No, it's not going to be good for everybody in here. It's not going to be. But they've met the requirements and as a board, we, we have to go along, you know, with the requirements that they meet and stuff. I feel like if, if we turned it down, they could take it further.
Yes, I mean, that's always the, the risk for the planning commission. If, if you approve something that meets all the requirements, then we can go.
That's what I was trying to get to a while ago and stuff, from you and stuff, but.
But you ain't met my requirements. So what am I going to do about the flooding that's going across my driveway now? Who's going to replace my driveway?
I'm, I'm, I'm only on a planning commission here. And, and I, I, we try to follow the law and do the right things. We have drug this out and drug it out with these people, trying to get the right things done. Your problem, I'm sure, came from the previous developer and stuff over there. When they went in and done this neighborhood like that, they didn't care. They just went in there and, and stuck these homes and stuff up, wouldn't worry about the drainage and stuff.
Did the board approve that too?
I wouldn't own this board.
Didn't we even have guidelines back then?
You know, you know, and right now, we're, we're following guidelines.
I get the guidelines, but you're taking the human. Yeah, they follow all the rules and regulations and zoning. We're the ones paying.
But I feel like for the first time, there's somebody trying to fix it. Like up until now, it's just like, let it happen. But right now, we got some people that are working hard to do everything that's humanly possible at this moment to fix it.
They ain't fixing it though. They're making, they're taking our property to do it.
Would you rather lose a little property or keep flooding?
And majority and ground without, we don't have anything concrete. And if somebody would say, yes, we're going to fix this. And have you ever seen the pipe that comes out between mine and the Patel's house?
I did. I have.
You know where the concrete culvert end is? Way in the back of the property, it's not even connected thing. And all that rocks and what do they call it? Rib, rib raft? Is all washed down every time. And Dan Pennick, who used to own the Patel's house, would go down and pick up all the rocks and.
Bang them, bang them back.
Because it's just tearing up that yard. And if I would hear somebody say, we're going to fix it. Right or wrong, you know, whatever we have to do, not the best we can do with what we got. I'd like something a little more concrete to say, you know, we're going to do the right thing. We all live here. We're all in the city. Up here.
And I understand it's about money, but.
And it's all it's about is what it's sitting.
But it's like, what can we cut to meet the regulations, the state money? Instead of just completely doing it right, you know? I feel like 10 years from now, we're going to be dealing with the same issue.
Maybe.
Maybe.
I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm an engineer.
Children can get in there. I've been in it. I've been in there. Children can get in there. I've been in it. I've been in there. And one, it's not safe. Two, it's unkept. It's, it's just an isolate, but, you know, nobody else gets to deal with it. Don't worry about it. Between mine and Patel's house.
But is that issue on these plans? It's not on these?
I think some of these, these issues that we're talking about today are, have already been approved a long time ago.
Twenty-plus years ago.
The technology's changed in 20 years, haven't it?
But they're, they're not looking, they, they have plans in front of them. That's all they can vote on tonight.
And I get that, but I'm.
Yeah.
I, I understand, and I understand.
I know y'all been.
Go in the neighborhood all the time there and stuff. And I, I know what Mr. Montgomery's got there. He, he, he's right. He's got a ditch. It runs five, a creek, it runs five, six days after rain comes through there.
My, my house.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there's that big swale thing and that pipe dumps right in it.
And, and I do understand, and this board does too. But, yeah, but what, what, what we're, what, what we're looking at tonight is Phase 3.
And it's one, you can really exactly work out. I mean, to be honest, though.
I, I agree, I agree, I agree with you 100%.
What the idea is, are these people gonna fix it?
They're, I, I don't think they would be required to, to fix somebody else's problem.
Is what they're, oh, Jesus. Fix somebody else's problem? They're not gonna remedy, they're paying for sins of others, is what they're doing.
That's correct. I, I think they've addressed it the best they can for, for this set of plans. And I, and I, I think that's all they can do because the first two phases are already passed. And that's.
You know, I, I don't wanna just start throwing other people, but I get to look at this every day. I live there. I know some of y'all live, don't want to look at it.
We don't wanna sound facetious all the time here, you know? But I'm just telling you what a problem we've got out there.
Understand.
And when, when I bought my property, we used to have Bob Mary to sit out over there. And Debbie, Debbie.
McMullin?
McMullins. And they said, "Everything's okay. We'll take care of it," you know?
It didn't.
And I'm still got it after 17 years.
But nobody, nobody's giving a concrete answer yet.
See, we walked out of here tonight. I'm gonna go home and I've got the same problem and I'll have it 10 years, yeah, 10 years from now.
I wanna take that.
I mean, if, if I can hear somebody say, "You know what? We've done our due diligence. This is going to alleviate this."
I suggest you go before the City Council.
Yeah, because, I mean, our job, as has been said, is, is have they met our guidelines and done what we asked them to do? We've been, we've looked at these how many times? 20? Yeah, right.
So, but this group can't address that. I mean, the city has, has been getting complaints about flooding citywide. We're looking at creating a stormwater utility.
Which we don't have.
We do not have, and we're not required to have. But guess who pays for the stormwater utility? Residents. You're charged for a stormwater utility like you are for water and sewer. So it's something that we're gonna, looking at proposing. We're looking at applying for grants, but there's, there's stormwater problems all over this city. There's stormwater problems all over Columbia. Trying to address them, and you're talking millions and millions of dollars. But that's not what they're looking at right now. But the commission is looking at stormwater issues. I mean, we're, we're looking at, at ways to fund issues, create, create the utility. What's the best way to do that? There'll be public hearings on that this year. Attend. Give us your opinion. There is not money to fix the problems right now, so we have to create a utility to fix those problems. It's, it's a situation that all corners of the city have experienced. We're buying out homes right now through FEMA.
That's coming up on the City Council?
Yeah, it's not on an agenda yet, but it's, it's, it's in the strategic plan. It's a priority.
I want you to know there's a human element.
And we understand, and we hate that. I mean, but that's.
Anybody else here got anything to say on this matter that hadn't signed up? It's not a motion.
Make a motion. We approve the final plat of Sugar Creek Subdivision, Section 3.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second. I think we take a roll call vote on this, please.
You wanna do that, Robert, or me?
I'll do it. Mr. Hunter? Ms. Graham? Mr. Marshall? Mr. Howe? Ms. Granberry?
No.
Let the record reflect the votes. Four in favor, one against. First and fastest.
All right, Roddy. Item number two on the.
Okay. It's PC 071321, FP2. Owners Allison Stewart, Rodney, and Jessica Watts, and Allison Bridges. Yeah, representative here. Okay. Represented by Rhodes, represented by Rhodes Engineering and Mr. Doug Shapiro. They submitted a plat revision for lots 92 through 95 in Section 2 of Sugar Creek Subdivision, requesting to revise the existing 10-foot public utility and drainage easement along the rear lot lines of said property to that of a 20-foot public utility and drainage easement for the purpose of construction and improvement of the existing stormwater drainage way. The lots we're talking about is on the Section 2 plat that you've been.
Right.
Given, and it's lots 92 through 95. That has been discussed a couple of times in our discussion of three. If y'all have any further questions, I'd certainly try to answer them as best I could. But it, in essence, is a 10-foot easement going to a 20-foot easement for the improvement of a drainage conveyance of the excess water flow in the existing ditch line, which will be improved during the construction process.
And all four of the owners are, all four of these homeowners are signed on.
I've got a signed plat in my office right now, and I don't know if Mr. Shapiro brought a copy, but I did.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure all board, all board think it's good.
And I apologize. The, the reason you don't have signatures on your plat is because he entertained the owners, I think, the night after, or the evening I had sent out the plat, and he had to meet up with me.
They all, they don't have to be recorded.
As long as it's on the record.
It is. It'll have to be there before I can record it.
No concerns with, with this then? I mean, it's, it's.
We're office and Loth and.
We have. We've looked at it, and that's part of the improvement to the ditch line in relation to the construction documents that we have reviewed for a period of almost two years at this point.
I make much in that we exist.
I have a motion in a second. Do another roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hunter? Ms. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Howe? Ms. Granberry?
Yep.
Vote stands five to one, all in favor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Number six, rezoning request.
What you have for you tonight is identified as PC 071321, RZ1. Owner Michael Floyd and applicant TKC Architecture and Engineering have submitted a rezon request for property at North Main, Street West of Cannon Road, being further identified on tax map 127, parcel 25. Dated recording deed book R2312 on page 1135 on file, emergency register D. The existing zone designation is light industrial. The request is to, to rezone 22 acres of this parcel north of Magnolia to R3 High Density Residential, but the remaining acreage to stay IL. Of course, the purpose of this request is for developing a residential subdivision. Other thing before this board tonight is the either approval or denial of the rezoning.
The rezoning?
Uh, that's correct. If, if approval is given, then the consideration of site plan review, construction documents, the whole thing will follow, and it'll follow suit through this board as well. Both Mr. Hicks and Mr. Cole from TKC are here. Y'all received documentation in relation to what was submitted to my office. It does show a concept of a development plan, which they didn't necessarily have to show, but it's, it's good that they did show that. So you can kinda get a better overall picture of the situation of the property and the area in which they're talking about. The concept, I think, actually is identified on page three of the documentation. But we did review this. Of course, turned comments out to reflect zoning text and our opinion from my office. If you would like me to read over those comments, I can. But they are a matter of record containing y'all's.
What's your office recommendation?
I didn't see him in here, Robert. Your recommendation. I may have missed it.
There, there's no recommendation. It's a, it's a comment, comment section, yes.
Yeah, that's.
So the bullet points basically identify where the property is situated. It's, it's surrounded by industrial and commercial zone districts. You have residential across the street, plus you have a power station across the street. You've got a existing tree line that buffers the property from Highway 43 to the other side of it. Of course, you've got GCP, which is the plant there in relation. Existing industrial land uses, area to the south side of Magnolia Drive, which is GCP as well. The R3 Zone District allows for single and two-family townhomes and multifamily use. Although the applicant has submitted a conceptual plan that identifies a townhome, any of those above listed uses that I just spoke about can be used on that property. Single or two-family dwellings, our comments go on to say, "Single or two-family dwellings may not be compatible with adjacent industrial uses that you see in the surrounding area. And future residents may object to future expansion of industrial uses due to the noise that would be coming from any type of expansion in that area." There is a significant lack of connectivity from the property to other residential developments other than directly across the street, and you have some residential homes that line Cannon there. Also, connectivity in really social and educational personal services is not available because we have none of those around there. Our downtown area, and then you get Hamilton Court. You've got some existing businesses that supply to the, to community or residential area right off the street across from the airport. The proposed use does not meet the spirit intent of RT, R3 District as referenced in the zoning ordinance, which states that R3 District should be located adjacent to downtown commercial activity. To energize local businesses and sidewalks are very important. That's straight out of our zoning text. That's the caption of R3 District. Developments in R3 Zones have a higher, higher, high degree of connectivity and cul-de-sacs are very rare. Alley's are used for private vehicle access for townhouses and apartment buildings. Still talking about the R3, which is what the rezoning request is for. Due to the amount of existing industrial development in the area in which you have, in that particular area, immediate access to US Highway 43, close proximity to Hurricanee Regional Airport. The highest and best use of, of this property may be industrial, as it is currently situated. In the event a rezoning request is approved, a final plat should be submitted to ensure accuracy of the proposed zone boundary perimeter. And then in, in the event that the rezoning request is approved, extra care should be expended to establish a certain residential character. For residents through the architectural style. We have our planning commission also dual-purpose, has our design review committee for residential subdivisions as well. So we just ask that in the event the rezoning request is approved, that when any plans are forthcoming for development, that we take extra care in architectural style, building materials, landscaping, and the transitional nuisance screening. So that was our comments. That's kind of an overview of zoning text. There's thoughts that will put into that as written in the comments, but we don't have a particular suggestion to this board other than what's reflected in our comments already. Y'all know where this exists. We all know what is out there at this time. It would be, you know, additional rooftops, which generally attract business, commercial. But it's situated specifically in a high industrial zone because you do have GCP there. You have power systems, power station there across the street. But you do have the houses that front Cannon as well.
It's not unlikely, though. You see that now, though. I mean.
That, that's correct.
You know, putting up subdivisions with cul-de-sacs and stuff like that right there.
Yeah.
With, with side industrial parks or whatever.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, that's right, right. It's the thing. And tonight, all, all this board voting on is a rezoning issue anyway, so. Everything, everything after that's gonna come back to you. We're gonna go right back through what we just went through.
Yes, sir, most certainly. So, you know, if, whatever the board's decision is tonight.
I understand, I understand.
When we go through, if it is approved, if it is given approval, and if we are tasked with going through an approval process for residential subdivision, we certainly will look at architectural design, transitional buffering, screening, anything that might assist that in being a subdivision. So just so the board's well aware that this is not the end result. But you, if you do give approval, we are given approval to allow all the way from single-family to multifamily construction because R3 incorporates all of those.
You could put over 100 people units there, deplively.
You could, and the conceptual site plan identifies a number of. So it's 22 acres, so I mean.
And, and, and on its rezoning, it cuts off where the, the flood zone starts.
It does. Good point. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yes.
So the, the 22 acres that we're discussing tonight is actually out of.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know all this other dinner. It, it is.
And, you know, if the board has any questions for Mr. Cole, he is here. He's put a lot of work into the project. He would be glad to answer. He's spoken before the board before, so he's very knowledgeable in his field, and he would be glad to entertain any questions the board may have.
I mean, we're just, we're just, you know, gonna vote on a rezon and, you know, everything else is gonna come back to you anyway, so.
Yes, sir.
If it's approved or disapproved.
You have your orange card. You know the drill. When you're deliberating about whether to rezone this property, you're supposed to find specific findings as to each of these one through four grounds. So when you're deliberating, try to use these reasons. Doesn't have to be in your motion. It can just be in your discussion right now before you make a motion.
I don't see where it'll be any adverse effect on adjoining property members.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to interject, but I didn't get here in time to sign my name.
This is Mr. Rooney. He's the manager of GCT.
That, that's fine. You can, you can speak if you'd like to speak.
Come on.
Yeah.
And just to let you know, I have spoken with Mr. Rooney on two different occasions. I knew he was coming, and I just didn't.
I think that, that, that's not a problem. We.
Thank you for hearing me and allowing me to be here. So I am Jim Roan. I represent GCP. Of course, you know where we are. Used to be WR Grace.
Correct.
We got about 65 to 70 employees there. I just wanna speak on the interest of the company. I agree with some of the things that were said here. I do believe that that property is best utilized for light industrial, which is what it's currently zoned. The reasons I say that is in my five-year tenure there, there's been three different times where we've looked at expanding our property there in our operations. We've actually got one going on now where we're competing between here and Chicago and a couple of other locations for potential expansion. The fact that that property's there is very advantageous because of two things. One, The fact that that property's there is very advantageous because of two things, one is it's directly across the street from us. Uh, secondly, it's on the level that we would want to be owned, because as was mentioned before, when it drops off there to the backside, uh, you're going to have a very hard time, I think, for, for construction, so we'd much rather have that. And whether it be us or anybody else potentially coming in here for, uh, expanding or building a new site, I think that might be an ideal location for you. Uh, one other thing I'd like to mention is, uh, I fully agree with, you know, the idea of planning commissions and separating things for, uh, business purposes and residential purposes and keeping them separate. In my experience and also from knowledge of reading and hearing about other people's experiences, I, I will say that I think there's a good reason to separate residential from, uh, light industrial or heavy industrial. Uh, it's been noted several times that there's some residential near our property. If you're familiar with the site, you'll be aware that our main facility is many acres, I would say, away from Cannon Road. And then those roads or those properties are not up against the road either, so if you consider a physical barrier around our property, it's rather substantial. Uh, the reason I think that you want to separate light industrial from residential is a lot of things. Uh, first of all, we work twenty-four hours, seven days a week, much of the year. Uh, there's a potential we'll be doing that full-time twelve months of the year in the near future, we have plans to, to do that. Um, with that comes a lot of potential things that, while we would not intend to do so, could make us bad neighbors for the people that live there, uh, or potentially would live there that much closer to our property. Obviously, you've got congestion of trucks, you got trucks coming and going day and night. Uh, you've got congestion with trucks trying to get in and out of our dock, uh, that can be, uh, a very real thing that I've experienced in other plants that I've managed. Uh, and we don't like to mention it, but noise, we don't have any noise complaints now. But if you have an operation, you're trying to sleep and you're close by, especially if you have small children, are the things that may come with this type of a zoning that you're looking at. I think it may be a headache for the city as well as us, if you have a lot of complaints for those kind of things. So, security is another thing, we're going to have lights that we need to have on for security, that can be, uh, a nuisance for people that live close by. Uh, and when we are shut down for holidays, weekends, or other slow times of the year, you have small children, pets, whatever, while we do our due diligence for security, you have much higher risk now, people being that much closer, that much more densely populated, they somehow find their way under our property. And that creates safety hazards and other things. So, from our perspective, we would be against this, and we would like to ask you to consider, you know, the reasons that I.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Can we speak as well?
Yes, sir, you, yes, sir, you may.
Good evening, commission, my name's Cole Newton, TKC Architecture and Engineering. And with the rezoning here before you tonight, and again, it's the rezoning, and if we're, you know, fortunate enough to move on, we'd be back for you with a site plan, but I think for us, it's, you know, some of the same things you are talking about with the property is very, um, advantageous to us, and the location being, you know, so close to be able to jump onto forty-three. Um, it does have, you know, connectivity to be able to take Magnolia back to North Main and be able to get into town, and then Cannon as well. And, you know, the property does touch some residential on both sides, I mean, we're looking at rezoning the section that's out of the floodplain, because that's the area that is, uh, developable right now, I mean, you know, I think when you look at the area in the floodplain, if you're trying to work with the city to see what kind of use we could get there from parks and working together to see what that is, and again, that's once you get to the, once we get to that site plan portion, but I think right now, just looking at what that opportunity is for, um, you know, what we see is opportunity there to put residential due to its location to the city and obviously to the, to the highway, and that we do feel like it touches residential on a couple of sides there. And trying to keep that development out, out of the, out of the floodplain and make that work. Um, we'd be happy to answer any questions, I mean, you do see, you know, we do, we do this all, all from Columbia and Mount Pleasant down to Larnesburg, and we kind of do, do these kind of, we try, try to find these opportunities when, when they exist. Um, you do see stuff kind of working together. You know, if we are lucky enough to make it to the site plan portion, I mean, you'd see a layered landscape type of situation, fences, to try to create some of that buffer. Uh, and, and as we look at the housing types and where to, where to place those, and all that would go into those, those thought processes that we would, you know, hopefully come here for work sessions and talk through and, and submit for, for, for some little review.
Just one other point is, where, where we're talking about the rezon, starting at kind of the floodline, is about even with prop, with their factory across.
I'm familiar with.
So, three-fourths of the development would be looking across Magnolia at that acreage he's talking about, it's sort of the green space in front of there, so in my mind, we have three or four unit types throughout this, the higher density, and we've done this a lot in Nashville, where it sort of goes from extreme industrial zoning change to high-density residential to lower-density residential, like you see in those neighborhoods, you know?
Right.
So that's how we would look at this too, is we'd stack higher density towards the back of the property, going more residential towards the front with the buffer all the way down, so three-fourths of it would, on, you know, it'd be basically green space all the way around it, you know, it's just that, what I'm referring to is the higher density would be. Which lends itself more towards, you know, the noise, the lights, the.
Yeah.
What's expected, you know, that kind of thing, so it's going to make that.
All right, we. Right by forty-three anyway.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, I didn't sign up to speak, but, uh, with the comments, I feel like I need to. I'm Jimmy Campbell, I'm with Cry Light Tonight, as well as many of the hats I wear in my camp. Uh, at least I'm representing, I'm helping Michael Floyd market his product. Uh, when I put my signs up months ago, uh, not a whole lot of action on it. Uh, DCP did call me and said, we have a new CEO, he asked why we don't buy the property. I got them everything they needed in order to make that decision, and they elected not to, uh, put a contract on the property. Contract comes by and I took it, and that's these people right here. But it's not like that we run around in front of somebody, yeah, in my opinion, DCP would be the people that own the property, but they didn't want to put a contract on it.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Not an entertaining motion.
That would be your time to go back to your deliberation.
Number one?
Yeah.
Well, again, like I said, number two, there's no adverse effect on adjoining property members.
But number one, it's really not in agreement with the land use plan for the area.
True, true, that's right. And I don't think it's, yeah, benefit to anybody in particular, for the detriment of the public. Nothing really changed there.
The lane that it's best used is light industrial, but I'm not a big fan of putting out this area just as a general rule, but I could see the case for it, but.
Yeah, we, we, we need stuff like that, but, but like this, I mean, it's not in agreement with our land use plan for the area. Well, it's kind of a.
I make a motion that we pass the request due to there will be no adverse effect on the adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public. We have the welfare, I grew up in Lowell for a while, and we had factories across here all the time, you walk to work and not be late.
Have a motion on the table? I'll second it. Do a roll call?
Uh, yes, Chairman. Mr. Hunter? Ms. Graham?
Aye.
Marshall? Mr. Howe? Granberry?
Yes.
Five to one, motion carries. All in favor.
Five to zero.
Five to zero. He keeps saying that one.
Is there somebody in here we don't know about?
Apologize.
I don't vote.
Pass.
And for anybody that's in the audience, uh, any, uh, declining a rezon or approving a rezon has to go to the city commission for two readings before it's, uh, approved. So it would be on the agenda next week, and then on the agenda again in August, and, um, before anything's final. And those are all public meetings, right?
Number seven, annexation request?
No, none, Chairman.
Number eight, site plan request?
All nine.
Number nine, old business?
None.
Ten other business?
None.
Eleven board and staff comments?
None.
Of course, we, twelve citizens comments, we've done them, thirteen, I hear, motion for adjournment.
Ah, maybe, some move.
All right.
I'll say.